Good evening and welcome, everybody. We appreciate you coming tonight and the fact that you are socially connected and you've been here in the past. So thank you for that. One second. Okay, is that better? All right. Tonight, we will open our regular City Council meeting, November 16th at 5:37, I believe it is. And Leslie, if you will please call forth.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Slater.
Here.
Councilman Abair.
Here.
Councilman Tordison.
Here.
Mayor Fortin now.
Here.
And Mayor Fitch.
Here.
All right, please stand for the invocation of pledge. Bless those present, oh Lord, that the business conducted here this evening will be for the continued betterment of our city. And in keeping with thy commandments, we ask in God's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord as the United States of America, and to the republic which stands before me, in the central, sovereign, and holy heavens. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Tonight, we need to be held at the Gulf Rees Community Center to allow for employee recognition presentations, and we're very pleased and excited to have that part of our program tonight. The meeting will be broadcast via UBS Live beginning at 5:30, which will be down. All right, the first thing on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the November 2nd meeting.
So moved.
Sorry. We've got a motion in second. Do we have any public comments or questions? Council, who special? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Thank you. All right, next is going to be a great part of our program, and that's for our presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we have 12 people that we want to recognize for outstanding service to our community in one event in particular tonight, but it's really for each of them every day and how they serve the community. And it's wonderful that we have an opportunity to say that to them personally. Over the years that I've been on council, I have learned each year more and more and seen how complex it is to run a small city like we have. And every time, I'm impressed by the employees, by their dedication, whatever office it's in, however I met them when I was at the high school, it was the same thing. And so, but becoming mayor, I have learned even more in more depth and breadth, I think, than I did before in terms of what it takes to make our city what it is and how we can help residents and watch it happen on a regular basis, thanks to those of you who work here and run the city. At this time, I will say that I probably learned the most the night of Hurricane Sally when I spent the night at the city hall with our city managers Samantha Abel, our assistant city manager Sheila Fitzgerald, and our IT person, Ed Miller. And we were just listening all night and what was going on and then hearing and seeing the people and the responses. It was really an amazing experience, and I consider that a privilege, actually, that I got to do that and see for myself, you know, just how well our city works. So with no further ado, I'd like to introduce Chief Hawthorne to begin our program, and I'm going to just step down.
It's a pleasure to be here today. I'm going to take this off so you can hear me. First of all, I'd like to invite the recipients from the police department up here. I've got Sergeant Kevin Skelton, Officer Brandon Scapen, Officer Kyle Sims, and our lead dispatcher, Lisa Baird. As we all know, Hurricane Sally hit us on September 16th. During that timeframe, I've got a new department, as far as a lot of younger people have never really been through a serious storm. So it was an eye-opener for everybody. Lisa Baird, my lead dispatcher, just became the lead dispatcher about two or three weeks prior to the storm hitting us, and has never been through a storm here or had a work getting to see what goes on and everything that happens through that part of it. Her calmness within the dispatch center and also a little bit of humor, because you have to have a little bit of humor during some of that time to relax, to relax the other people involved. Because like I said, you know, the rest of the dispatchers are young, haven't been through it. Lisa was that calming nerve for them. She stayed through the night, able to assist any emergencies we had. And plus, where we're located, you know, just in case we would have to move the communication center for safety reasons, she was there to help and prepare to, you know, get everything moved to a safer location and all that. You know, so for two days, she pretty much lived at the police department, either entertaining everybody on her off. The time when I had a phone teller and she needed to go to bed and leave us alone, she was starting to get on everybody's nerves. So, but her calming influence and her professionalism in there during that night was very, made it easier for me to work on everything else and not worry about the dispatch. With the city's exemplary, I'm going to say this, I'll probably say it wrong every time, exemplary pen, Lisa Baird.
Congratulations. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you so much. Yes, and so if maybe stand on this side, just so that Lisa, we can get a picture of you and she for the mayor.
Go dogs.
Yeah. No, that's yours. And so let accommodation, I'll also go, it'll save you.
Now, for the other three. During that storm, you know, we bunker down when storms, you know, the wind speeds out and it's dangerous to be out there with flying debris and everything. But about 8:30 that morning, we got a phone call for 911, help down Soundview Trail. Individual was trapped in the lower floor of his house. He had gone to take his dog, I think, out, and he's in a wheelchair and got stuck in the elevator. Of course, Soundview Trail at that time had water and was flooded and everything. Luckily, we've got our Humvee and these three officers, Sergeant Skelton, Scapen, and Officer Sims, were out in the Humvee, were able to make it to the house, locate the house, were able to get into the shaft of the elevator shaft and secure the individual, bring him upstairs, him and the dog. So both are safe upstairs during the storm, you know, the floodwater's coming and everything like that. So without their, able to be able to get there, you know, there could have been a loss of life there possibly and everything. So with that, they'll receive the meritorious service award from the police department.
At this time, Chief Carmichael will come forward to introduce the fire department.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight, much to the chagrin of the firefighters. They like to remain low-key and they were saying, "Chief, we were just doing our job and what we were supposed to do." But I think it's important that they be recognized tonight. And one, as y'all already know, but the majority of the citizens don't know, in the city of Gulf Rees, we are a volunteer fire department. And so I think anytime we can call recognition to these guys for stepping outside of the bounds of what they normally do. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and call Scott Casper, Carl Hoffman, Matthew Hoffman, and Owen Sides up to the podium. You know, a couple of things I like to point out. One, all these men started out as explorers, and so some of them have been with us since they were 14 years of age. You know, when you look at someone like Matthew and you see his young demeanor, don't let that fool you. He's been there four years and now it's been, he started at 14 and it's been like six years. So the other thing I like to point out, and I'm very proud of, all four of these gentlemen are graduates of Gulf Rees High School, so it's go dogs.
It's go dogs.
So the night that Sally was coming to shore the evening before, San Rosa County had made a decision to curtail emergency services, and that included dispatching, you know, police and fire and EMS units. And somewhere around 9:00 or 10:00, San Rosa County shipped a call, a 911 call, for a medical emergency. And, you know, it's hard for me to describe and can give you all the details of that without highlighting HIPAA, but there was no ambulance coming. So we went ahead and responded. The squad truck, the four individuals, they volunteered to go. They quickly arrived on scene and assessed the patient and determined that the gentleman was suffering a life-threatening condition. Without hospital care or definitive medical care, he probably would not make it. So they loaded the individual into the squad, they backed into the yard, they got out what we call a mega mover, which is just a fancy word for a tarp, put him in the tarp, took him out to the truck, put him in the backseat, and drove him to Gulf Rees Hospital. And so that's stepping outside of the bounds of what we do. For one, we're not a transport agency. And number two, they did it when they weren't asked to do it and didn't have to do it. So with that, I would like to congratulate them and give them their meritorious ribbon. Back to one up, you first. We'll put it all together. Carl?
Matthew Hoffman? Owen Sides?
He feels kind of angry toward the middle. Yeah.
So this is a really fun thing for me to do and an easy thing for me to do. The folks that I'm recognizing in my department did extraordinarily well during Hurricane Sally, much exceeded my expectations. Being a director, my first big storm as a new director, you know, I had expectations for myself to be out there doing what I used to always do at the treatment plant, just be very hands-on and take charge and command. And something clicked at this storm that these people that we're going to recognize, they did that. They were ahead of that, allowed me to focus on what I needed to focus on and really support them and make sure that communications were there. But these people did extraordinarily well and surprised me and very much impressed me. So I'm going to call up Janay Roberge, our utility manager. And Ben Watts, our wastewater treatment plant superintendent. Zach Willis, our inner utility manager. And is Randy Blackbeard?
Yeah.
Oh.
Nice to hear it, Randy.
Okay, so we'll start with Randy. Randy is our natural gas supervisor. So you might be wondering, well, what does a natural gas supervisor do during a storm event like that? Well, he's not your typical natural gas supervisor. Randy is a leader. He will do whatever it takes to get the job done. He is a jack-of-all-trades, and he was always there when we did. And that night, he was moving pumps, hooking up hoses, troubleshooting pumps, checking pumps, getting wet, getting knocked over by debris blowing across the Shirley Drive up there. And so he did an extraordinary job for us. It wasn't even, you know, being a gas supervisor, you could have focused just on that, but he was there to do anything and everything that needed to be done. So extraordinary job and exemplary service. I appreciate it. Very good. Next is Zach Willis. I mean, sorry. What's your next name? A little nervous and emotional, because this is really, these people really did well. But Zach Willis is our water and sewer superintendent, but he's also going to be our utility manager in a minute soon. But during the night, several nights of the storm, stayed overnight, he was focused on the collection system, the water plants, keeping all the services going. And we really didn't have any interruptions in the water service until we had some main breaks, which is going to happen. But again, extraordinary service. He brings a lot of experience, been through Ivan and Dennis and other utilities, and I am so glad that we had him during this storm. Next is Janay Roberge. She's our utility manager. So Janay is over water, sewer, and wastewater and reclaim system, and Janay was like a command and control center, just in and of herself, along with Stephanie Chaves, her administrative assistant. They took this Teams app, Microsoft Teams app, and just ran with it. I don't know, I don't even know how it worked so well, because I fumbled through this thing, but it's like an instant text kind of messaging where everybody that's on the app sees what's coming down the pipe. And she was able to use that to her advantage, to our utilities' advantage, to identify issues and breaks and emergencies and get people and assets to those situations and get them handled like I never thought was possible. It was that extraordinary. Next is Ben Watts. He's our wastewater treatment plant superintendent. Ben and I were at the treatment plant for several years. The last major storm event we had was in 2014. Ben was not there. He did not, he was not there to experience all that you got to do for a major rain event. He was up here working on stormwater stuff, helping out with pumps and all that. So how he was able to figure out what to do so well is amazing. He knew what to do and how to deal with all the flow coming in. He prevented our storage pond from failing because the level got so high, which if it failed, it would have flooded houses and could have caused some serious damage and some emergencies. And just even from when we had electrical and mechanical failures, for power circuits and to assets that came in that Janay coordinated in terms of borrowing pumps and generators and actual staff that came in to assist us, Ben was able to work with them to pinpoint what needed to be done, what needed to be fixed and repaired, and really handled the storm extremely well, and I'm impressed. So. Let's see if we can pull these out. Zach, who do you put my? Trying to social distance, but.
It's not going to happen.
So, Janay, congratulations on your extraordinary service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you all could stay up here and if those of you who are already bug-wrecked once could come back and get an alarm for it, we could quit. You all are here. Yeah, I'm getting ready to sort of get to the point, I need at least two rows. I've got all my plates together. Chief, you want to get them?
Got to get the color.
Yes?
Yeah.
Your body's small.
Yeah.
One time for us, man.
All right, we will now have moved on to the first reading ordinance, number 092020, and that's likely acquiring the fire and communication facilities that are wired away. Samantha?
Yes, Madam here. We received an email late this afternoon from one of the utilities asking that this ordinance again be tabled with the position that they felt there were legal concerns, which I have shared with the city attorney. This is the second iteration of concerns expressed the same day as the ordinance is to be considered, but in consideration of those concerns expressed, Mary Jane has extended an invitation to discuss their concerns more fully, and they are separate concerns than expressed the first time. So we would ask that it be tabled.
All right. All right, so now we will move on to resolution number 70-2020, not including a plan of finance, building, financing, and the issuance of not to exceed $320 million in capital trust agency revenue bonds. Samantha?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Tupper hearing was held this morning with no public in attendance. This is for the acquisition and leases for 10 charter schools and refinancing and financing of debt. This debt will be issued in series relating to further review by the Capital Trust Agency as those 10 charter schools proceed with their projects and construction. This has been recommended by approval by the CTA.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone from the public with any questions or comments? Hearing none, Council, do we have a motion?
Who can?
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion for Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass is five zero. Resolution number 71-2020, including a plan of finance, WFCS Holdings LLC, and the issuance not exceed $161 million in capital trust agency revenue bonds. Samantha?
Thank you. This is for the acquisition of leases and funding of debt and refinancing for seven charter schools. Likewise, a Tupper hearing was held this morning with no public in attendance or emails received for any questions or concerns, and likewise, the CTA has recommended approval.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
And a second. All right, any discussion, Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass is five zero. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any?
Resolutions.
All the budgets. Okay. All right, resolution, I'm sorry, resolution number 73-2020, budget amendment number one, fiscal year 2020. Samantha?
Thank you. We did have a scriptener's error. If you could just point out for the record that it is the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2021. So you're probably all, we're all scratching your heads here, thought we were for sure into 2021, and indeed, we are. Resolution number 73-2020 increases revenue by a total of $2,694,416. The resolution is necessary due to the sale of surplus lands and is to be allocated with $1,275,204 to the general fund for the repayment of expenses as further enumerated in your annual capital, and $794,200 and $161.
All right, we will now have moved on to the first reading ordinance number 092020, and that's likely acquiring the communication facilities that the ride away. Samantha?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received an email late this afternoon from one of the utilities asking that this ordinance again be tabled with the position that they felt there were legal concerns, which I have shared with the city attorney. This is the second iteration of concerns expressed the same day as the ordinance is to be considered, but in consideration of those concerns expressed, Mary Jane has extended an invitation to discuss their concerns more fully, and they are separate concerns than expressed the first time. So we would ask that it be tabled.
All right. All right, so now we will move on to resolution number 70-2020, not to create a plan of finance, building, financing, and the issuance of not to exceed $320 million in capital trust agency revenue bonds. Samantha?
Thank you, Mary and Council. The Tupper hearing was held this morning with no public in attendance. This is for the acquisition and leases for 10 charter schools and refinancing and financing of debt. This debt will be issued in series relating to further review by the Capital Trust Agency as those 10 charter schools proceed with their projects and construction. This has been recommended by approval by the CTA.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone from the public with any questions or comments? Hearing none, Council, do we have a motion?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion for Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. Resolution number 71-2020, not creating a plan of finance, WFC S Holdings LLC, and the issuance not exceed $161 million in capital trust agency revenue bonds. Samantha?
Thank you. This is for the acquisition of leases and funding of debt and refinancing for seven charter schools. Likewise, a Tupper hearing was held this morning with no public in attendance or emails received for any questions or concerns, and likewise, the CTA has recommended approval.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
And a second. All right, any discussion, Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any? Do you have this one? Resolution.
Okay.
Okay. All right, resolution, I'm sorry, resolution number 73-2020, budget amendment number one, fiscal year 2020. Samantha?
Thank you. We did have a scriptener's error. If you could just point out for the record that it is the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2021. So you're probably all, we're all scratching your heads here, thought we were for sure into 2021, and indeed, we are. Resolution number 73-2020 increases revenue by a total of $2,694,164. The resolution is necessary due to the sale of surplus lands and is to be allocated with $1,275,204 to the general fund for the repayment of expenses as further enumerated in your annual caper, and $794,200 and 16 cents to the South Penarosa Utility Fund 403. And this is pursuant to past council discussions and action, and based on that, staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public with a comment or a question? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that passes five zero. Now on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the Council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, do we have any questions or comments from the public? All right, do we have a motion?
Move for approval. I'll call Charlie Brown.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Passes five zero. Next, we'll go to action agenda item A, and that's approval for funding of the Sever to Remember Mary Market event to support business, area of business. Samantha?
Thank you. I'm going to ask arson recreation director Ron Fuller to come and talk with us a little bit more about the Mary Market. I will only say that the Gulf Reast Tourism and Development Advisory Committee met last week and recommended approval of the funding for the 2020 Mary Market not to exceed $30,000 from TDAC funds, and those were unencumbered miscellaneous funds. And to date, we have already received contributions from area business sponsors that exceed $10,000 in addition to the TDAC funds. So I'll share with you that update, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ron to talk a little bit more about the details.
Thank you, Samantha. Council, it's always good to be in front of you. The Mary Market this year will run on December the 12th, the same day as the parade. It'll follow the parade in the afternoon, run for approximately four hours, and conclude right before, right before sunset. It will be the same basic concept as what we experienced at the Barge Ween event over at the high school, except it's going to be in the park. And it will occur on the driveway in the same location that we do the cook-off in the other Rotary events back on the driveway. We anticipate, again, 60 to 62 participants, and each of those individuals will have the opportunity to have gift cards, present gift cards that can be given away, and the city will assist in the funding of vouchers to encourage participation in businesses within the community. Any questions?
Any questions?
Is it gonna be a similar set of the incentives, be like the Barge Ween?
Very, very similar.
Some merchants will give away something like a little gift bag, what they did there at the other.
Merchants will have the opportunity to do presentations and things, you know, and show their wares, and there will be gift cards and vouchers available. Gift cards from individual merchants that may be used specifically at that merchant store, and vouchers provided by the city that may be used at any of the stores that are participating in the event. Tips on both sides, regarding to it.
I was not here for the Barge Ween, but I heard it was a parade, and a lot of people showed up, and I know that we had over, I think, 300 gift bags, and there were only 20 minutes. We had scrambled at the store, and it was.
I was working the gate at the Barge Ween event. We opened the gate, and it took an hour and 45 minutes for everyone to get through the gate to get into the event.
It wasn't healthy to cheat that long enough. Job on the move.
Yeah, I was completely disguised. Right there.
But anyway, it was a parade, and I'm sorry.
That was it. Thank you. Good stuff.
Any other questions or comments for Ron? Do we have any questions or comments from the public? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Action agenda item B is the award of bid to Empire Builders Grouping for the Public Service Office Expansion. Samantha?
Thank you, Mary and Council. I'm gonna ask Jason to come because this agenda item and the next fall within his department. This is a budgeted expense. I'll only tell you just before Jason tells you that he has employees in the building behind Public Works who are stacked two, three, and four individuals to an office. That obviously causes problems that we knew about even before the pandemic, but it is causing quite a few issues, which is why this has been your capital improvement plan for the last three years, the budgeted expense last year as well, and so we're proud to be moving forward with that. Jason, can you give us more particulars?
That's pretty much the gist of it. We have, it was budgeted last year, we just didn't get it advertised soon enough, so it kinda got pushed back later in the year, and there was two bidders that bid the project. The contractor we're recommending is a good one. They did the bathrooms, they did a good job, and the bids came a little higher than what was budgeted, but we have natural gas reserves, our reserve fund, to make up the difference. And so the recommendation is to award the bid and approve the funding of the expansion project to Empire Builders Group for $170,075.
And we use this group to support?
Yes. Yeah, they're doing the bathroom project at City Hall, and I think we'd use it for other things, but I just know of that one, that project.
I think it's foam insulation. Yeah, the spray foam insulation. I think it's a good move.
Yes. That's the staff's recommendation. It just makes sense, because it's a, basically what it is, is it's a steel building right now. It's like two open bays where we just park equipment, so they're converting one of those bays to office space. And the spray foam insulation will get into the crevices and everything a lot better. It seemed like a better alternative.
So the buildings are or are not connected? Just trying to picture.
There, there's the, what we call a natural gas ready room is part of this building, and that's like an office, kinda where the staff have their morning briefings, and there's a little kitchen in there. And then next to that, where the ice machine is, there's an open bay there, and then next to that is another open bay. So the far open side will be office, and it won't be connected to the other one, no.
They have a common roof.
What's that?
They have a common roof over there.
Yes, yes.
Which is metal.
Yes.
So the foam would be a good thing, so we could slow down the cooking in that metal.
Yes, they are, because our new GIS tech just started today, and I mean, we, the department is growing, so we need more office space, for sure. Well, Thomas is still working remotely. He's coming back in January, so there's a little, there's space in my office, but what Samantha was saying, where our two project managers are, we had two project managers and then our logistics officer, Roger Jackson, they were all in Harold's old office, if you know what that is, and they were pretty tight, so we had to boot Roger out to share an office with Stacy, and that's barely social distance. So yeah, we're definitely in the need of it.
Your need, your need. All right, do we have any questions or comments from the public regarding this? All right, Council, do we have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. All right, Jason, now tell us about the purchase of four vehicles for Public Works.
Okay, so our fleet, you know, it's an aging fleet. Some of our trucks are over 10 years old. Our project manager, Clifton, is driving a 19-year-old Dodge with 220,000 miles on it, and definitely in need. That's one of the high priority trucks to turn over, and that truck will obviously surplus. Some of these other trucks that are still, they'll be replaced, but they'll be kind of pushed down in the fleet of just like local use only, not major use. So we're asking for four vehicles. Two of the trucks are budgeted in the gas department. There'll be the service body trucks for the gas operations folks that are out doing installs and things like that. One of the trucks is a replacement truck for development services. Originally, that was budgeted to be funded from all the different portions of public services, just 20% for water, 20% from sewer, and, but what we'd like to do is fully fund it from the gas department and the streets department, and the way we're gonna do that is we had a bucket man, a man lift bucket truck budgeted for the streets department. Those are about 220,000, and that was approved in the budget. Well, we've had a turnover in that department, and the new supervisor prefers, and I prefer as well, a trailer man lift. They're a lot cheaper, they're about 45 grand, and they're just a lot more practical, and with the savings, we're gonna be able to do some other things if you all approve it, and one of which would be to finance a crew cab truck. And the other thing would be to, the other savings we'd like to use to fully fund the rest of Clifton's truck, instead of waiting for the water and sewer, funding that may come down the road through the sale of land or whatever, but we can do it right now if we go this route. So the ask, the request is for two service body trucks that are budgeted in the gas department, and then two crew cab trucks that will be funded from the streets department, stormwater department, and the gas department.
All right, Council?
I have a question. Where does the trailer come in? Do we already have that?
No, the trailer, there's two different kinds of lifts we're looking at. One is, it's a trailer and a lift at the same time. You just pull it and position it where you're gonna use the man lift, and it's like a scissor lift. And then there's another kind, we've seen Hurt Brothers use, that is actually, it's a small lift that you put on a trailer and you take it where you wanna go, and it actually can drive. It can, it can move.
I guess my question is, you're taking the savings from the bucket truck to buy the four vehicles, but it sounds to me like we still need the trailer.
Right, and that's what we're gonna do differently, and we're gonna bring that to you at another meeting. We're gonna, it'll be a purchase for a trailer man lift.
So then either, or it's a stormboat.
Well, go ahead.
Difference is, I think, it's a whole lot less.
Two of these, the first two vehicles will be funded out of natural gas. It's the last two that Jason is talking about using only a portion of the 225,000 budgeted originally for that lift station, so, I'm sorry, for that bucket truck. So there will still be a savings, which will just stay in the budget, and then he'll reflect that in that line item. He'll show you, you know, the monies that remain and what will be deducted from that once we look on the state contract and they continue to fine tune their best need and bring that recommendation back to you.
Yes, we've looked at some pricing of some of the trailered version of the man lift, and we'll come to you with that in the future date. It's just the vehicles take so long to get, so we wanna get those approved and get them ordered. The trailer man lifts, those types of things are more readily available. We can get those pretty quick.
Basically, you could buy the man lift trailer and a vehicle to pull it with and still have a hundred-plus thousand dollar savings by not buying the bucket truck?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. Exactly. And then you have a truck that you could use when you need a truck.
Right.
To take in a bucket truck somewhere that's not pranking.
Exactly. Yeah, and it'll sit, park most of the time. Yeah.
All right, any other discussions or questions?
I do, but I'd like to add, when you look at the cost of the vehicles, which one of these vehicles would save the Clipper to be going to? The 1,500 Silverado work truck? I mean, Dodge 1,500?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I'm looking at the difference in the cost. There's really not a whole lot of difference in cost from the Dodge versus the Chevy. I mean, it's like $1,111, and if you, you know, like you said, a 10-year-old, if you equate that over a 10-year period, it's only like $9 a month more. I know in some cases, the Chevy, you've seen the whole look better. If a little bit of money, more money, you might get better service out of it than the Dodge. You don't always have to go with the cheapest thing out there just because it's the cheapest, and you may have more service problems down the road, especially when you get close to the length of the vehicle. I'm in the service business, and I've used both Dodge, Chevy, and Ford, and Ford, I think, does the best in my mind, but the Chevy right under, and the Dodge, in my opinion, for my service vehicles, has always given it more trouble in the past, so, but a little extra, I think it might be worth. I wouldn't be opposed to approving the request, we give you the option to go with the Chevy and so does I. Don't prefer the Dodge? Unless that's what you prefer, but I think.
Not necessarily. I mean, we obviously prefer the lowest and best price, but the Dodge service bodies are right at budget for that price. We budgeted 40 grand each, and then we bought, we've had all different varieties, you know, and it doesn't matter to me. And they all have issues, and I talked to Terry at Gulf Reast Hire, just to get her two cents, and she's seen our vehicles over the years, and she's pretty much, you know, well, these have this issue, these have that, and so forth, you know? And I got on Edmunds to see what they had to say, and Dodge was best in class in the half-ton and best in class in three-quarter ton. Now, I could've got on three different websites, and they would've had a different story, but Dodge was the top in each one of these websites, either it's a half-ton or the three-quarter ton. So I'm wanting to give them a chance, another chance, and we had a Dodge, Janay has a Dodge extended cab, the same truck we're looking at, because the price was so low, and we had just a little bit of money to get it last year. We got that truck, and then we have a Silverado about the same year, and we're kind of seeing how it goes, and the Silverados actually had to go to shop for electrical issues, and the Dodge hasn't, but, you know. Clifton's driving a 19-year-old truck, it's still on the road. I mean, it's beat up, but it's 19 years old, and so I think it's, I think, I don't think we can go wrong with any of these, and I think Clifton would rather have a Chevy. My other supervisor, he doesn't care, but if you all wanna go with the Chevy, it would make Clifton happy, but.
He did say he would rather the Chevy.
Yeah.
So I might go to that one.
He started with four.
Just to, just to, by the cherry says. So, so we can call it, off of the big three, and back to 112.
I, I mean, on the state contracts, they're really high. They're high, and I have looked at them, I tried to find some, read some savings, whichever, you know, like I said, it doesn't really matter to me as long as the price is really good and they're good, reliable, but the, the, the big three are lower priced by far on the state contracts. And Dodge is not always offered, so in the years we bought Chevys, I think last year, it was, where's the Dodge? Well, Sheriff's Association didn't even, they didn't have anybody bid on the Dodges, or it might've been the year before. Sometimes GMC's the cheapest. There was a couple of years where GMC beat Dodge, so, you know, like I said, it's kinda like, we're trying to give you a recommendation of the lowest and the best and what we recommend, and, you know, I'm confident with the Dodges. We've been buying Durango's, they've been, they've been doing well. There was a problem with the '06 Dodges, and up to '06, the dashboards would crack, but other than that, mechanically, they were on, they stay on the road. But like I said, I don't really have a, it's like tractors. I mean, we got Kubota's, we got John Deere's, whatever color you like, but it's, to me, it's whatever's the best value. That's what I'm bringing.
Okay. Question to Terry, or a second? And any other comments or concerns in the public? Terry, yes. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opponent, say a no. Pass is five zero. All right, action agenda item D. This is the approval of request by Dr. Little, extension of source for Soundside.
This was brought before the board, the South Santa Rosa Utility Board, and they recommended it for tonight. So there's been a project there that's been ongoing for a long time, a very desirable project to bring Forest Main down Oak Drive to Soundside, and that's, that's been done. And what Dr. Little would like to do is extend a portion of that on Soundside going east to where he could hook up sewer. And it's going to be an investment on his part. But what he's asking, and we've done this for several other people, is to do a step program, a cooperative program, where anybody else that puts up will pay a fee to help pay for some of that infrastructure. And this also includes an apartment complex down there that's had notorious problems with their septic system. They, they would really benefit from this as well to hook up. And it's a, it's a good project, and it's, Mary Jane's been looking at a contract. It's a similar contract we've done before. And so it does not cost us anything. We would just kind of administer, as people request a hookup. We would ask for that fee that would go back to Dr. Little.
Dr. Little is here, to see if you have any questions.
Okay, we have any questions regarding?
I don't think it's possible.
Yeah, we have, we have done this before. I think it's always very successful.
Thank you.
Getting it started.
Thank you. It's a good thing, it's a fair thing to do, it's marketing.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move and approve.
Okay, in a second?
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opponent, say a no. All right, that's my team. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to action item E, and that's property appraiser litigation, the Tiger Point Golf Course property tax exemption. In that regard, the city incoming, Mayor James.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is the first of a few items on Tiger Point and the golf course, I would like to, before getting into the actual agenda item, just report to you that we did close on the sale of the 45 acres. Budget resolution is to how these funds are allocated, which will be dispersed this week. The checks in the bank and it's, the monies are available. We'll be dispersing and getting everything before. So, very pleased to have that.
She has long time and a lot of work.
So, please, all. So, please, everybody.
So the item on the agenda tonight is one that you have entertained every year for the past four years, I guess. And it relates to the litigation that was being engaged in with the property appraiser, who has continued to determine that the Tiger Point Golf Course property does not qualify for a property tax exemption. They once again sent the bill, which is in your agenda packet, and are saying that the city would owe it paid by November 30th, And of course, it's additional charges if you choose to pay later, going up to $23,127.169 when it paid by March 31, 2021. And each year, the special counsel handling the litigation has asked that we bring to you the recommendation that they be authorized to file suit over this tax bill that preserves your rights to challenge and to dispute the taxes. It is just the procedural step that has to be taken in order to maintain that challenge on an annual basis until the litigation is resolved. I'll also say, I think I've reported to you that, as you, of course, are aware, the city has prevailed on the first two years involved in this challenge. They first at the Value Adjustment Board, and then it was taken to Circuit Court, and the Circuit Court has ruled in favor of the city, but the property appraiser has appealed that. The oral argument for the First District Court of Appeals is at 1:00 p.m. tomorrow. And I will send you a link, I think I did that last year, in the event you want to tune in and hear how the argument goes and what the judges might ask in that argument. But it will be a few months after the argument before we get a ruling, but we're, of course, hopeful, and I think the special counsel is hopeful that the Circuit Court's decision will be upheld. And then there are some factual distinctions, because we changed management companies. So there are some factual distinctions in the later years, 2018, 19, and of course, it would apply for this year. And so those will have to still be resolved, but we're hoping that the ruling of the First District Court of Appeals will provide some guidance to the law court and to the parties as to, you know, how that should be resolved. And again, hopefully, it will be in the city's favor. But in the meantime, we have to maintain the challenge. You have the option of deciding not to pay the taxes. They are not due, disputed, and in litigation, but you can pay them. If not paid, there is a 12% interest that is running. In past years, you have determined that you didn't want to pay, and I think that was decided by the council at times when there was, it was less apparent how this was going to proceed. And again, you know, anything can happen when on an appeal, so I can't tell you for sure, and the special counsel can't tell you for sure that we're going to prevail. But I think that, you know, the Circuit Court has ruled in their favor. And so, you know, to make that decision to not pay today is, you know, you have a little more comfort in that underlying court decision, making that decision. So again, you can decide you want to go ahead and pay it and then not run the risk of the 12%, but you are, that 12%, if you were to lose, is running on the other years when you decided not to pay. So again, that is the recommendation that you decide not to pay the taxes again for 2020, but authorize the special counsel to, again, file suit. Got to answer any questions?
Can we, um, special counsel, any questions?
So, is there more litigation in the area of taxes?
Actually, in the sale of the driving land, in the sale of the 45 acres, because the, with the outstanding taxes, which again, one could dispute whether they're really due in the litigation, but there is a lien, the property appraiser has got a lien of the property. And in order to give assurances to the purchasers, we have part of the purchase agreement that you considered and approved on those two sales was to put money in escrow to cover the back taxes. So I do think that that is approximately $150,000. And that's the amount due on the entire property because the lien, you know, you don't prorate it. Even if you sell the 45 acres, the lien's still there on those until the litigation is resolved and that we're paying for it, determined to be exempt. So, yes, a lot of this has been with litigation, and I think it's, you know, it's going forward. You know, it's important to determine that, so.
Didn't answer the question there. Question is, I guess, there's more litigation than we would if we was to pay the $22,000. Between, between, is Mr. Brown right?
Yes.
Between what that he's doing and what we're doing, I mean.
Oh, absolutely, between the two, yes, the experts. And I think that's been, went down a significant level. Would it come in better than I came on to?
We have thus far, we have thus far paid $125,000. That was part of the budget resolution that you considered earlier. So depending, ultimately, this litigation refers to the East Course. It refers to the portion of the golf course that is managed by a third party. And so depending on what we do, you know, with the East Course, you may, you know, that, that may influence your, the decision that you have and how to address this. Meaning, prior, we thought that we could be taxed for years. But if you see our relationship with the East Course coming to a close, that could influence how you address this.
But I will say, whether you pay it or not, you're still, unless you chose just to, to, you know, back down on the litigation, which I don't think at this point would be the decision you would want to entertain, of course you can. But you're still going to be paying to resolve the litigation. The litigation is moving, you know, to an end. It's going to, you know, hopefully next year, but it's running its course, so.
Would our lawsuit involve recoupment legal fees?
Uh, no, not, not necessarily. I have to consult with special counsel on any opportunity to recover attorney's fees, but attorney's fees are not always recoverable in litigation unless there's a statutory provision applied for it. You can recover costs of the litigation, so costs like transcripts and depositions and things like that, but the actual attorney's fees, I don't, I do not know at the moment, but I can check on that and see if there would be an opportunity to recover the fees if we could.
You know, my, 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 with that hardware with this, because we're spending taxpayer's money to fight a beast in taxpayer's dollars and things like that. And it's taxpayer's dollars anyway, if we pay it, it's all goes to, it's just, it's fluid money, but I heard that to waste that extra money to do a 22000 thing, you know, it's. That's the property taxes, right?
Yeah, if I just also mentioned that I reported this to you last week, that back in, this was before I was on board, so I inherited this in the time, but something going on. The tax, the, it was also a case filed in Circuit Court claiming that the city had failed to provide public records in response to a public records request from the property appraiser back in 2016, early 2017 timeframe, that related to this issue of the tax exemption. You know, my understanding, when I took it over, was nothing had happened in the case for, really, over a year. And that it appeared to be sort of moot, and they had gotten the documents they wanted eventually through the discovery of this litigation. In the last month, there was a motion filed by the court, actually, to, under the rules that allowed for dismissal of the case for lack of prosecution. So when the party filed the case, the property appraiser had not pursued it, the court eventually said, okay, nothing's going on, we're just going to drop it. The property appraiser decided to file something, and they give you a time period in which to, you know, file something else to try to kind of revive it. Well, they filed another motion last week just to revive it, and we'll have, I think they'll be hearing on it next Monday, and I will report back to you how that goes. But again, you know, we're being, we are suing on this because of procedure, but the property appraiser is the one who has challenged all along. The Value Adjustment Board determined the property was exempt from taxation. The Circuit Court has determined it's exempt from taxation. You know, they provide this Public Records Act case that has been pending now since 2017, and they never did anything with it. So it's just, you know, yes, you're right, but it's the property appraiser who's continuing to say this.
It's still, it's still our dollars that are being presented, but.
That is frustrating, and I did want to say one thing on the public records litigation, because I was here during that. And so we received a public records request, and we responded timely and stated that the records were available and asked how they would like to receive those records. We did not get a response. And the next thing that we received was the lawsuit. That's also public records. So if anyone would like to see our timely response, we can provide that to you. I consider that to be frivolous. I wanted to make sure that you knew that.
Well, it's, it's at the counsel's direction, obviously.
So if we can make a decision on that tonight, we waited to hear how you think, would the ruling affect if we put it off to the next meeting?
You, well, no, the, the challenge in the lawsuit has to be filed.
Before they vote that way?
Before the end of, I think it's, it's like mid-December. But you could, I think, come back and make a, you could make a decision on whether to pay the taxes. But the decision to file and preserve your right to challenge for this year, that must be filed. But the decision to pay the taxes is sort of, you know, different from that. You would just be doing it in order to, in order to, you know, avoid the 12% in the debt you were to lose and have to pay it ultimately. But again, if you want to challenge these, this year's taxes, that suit has to be filed, but I believe it's in December.
So they.
But I don't have the exact date, and we talked, gave us the exact date.
So wait, when's the next meeting?
December the 7th.
Right. And I don't have the exact date. He asked it, we go ahead and bring it to you. So we can give it forward and prepare to follow it.
What kind of cross are we looking at just to file it, to do?
That is not, no, not that much, no. Because, I mean, it's the same suit that's been filed every other year, so it's, it's going and changing numbers and changing the year, so that should.
20 months. A Dodge, we have. But then, and then hypothetically, if we did file and then say that the ruling on the appeal did not go up there by some chance, we still have till March before that 12% would be added to this current year.
Correct.
It just gives you a little break if you pay it in November versus March, which is a small amount, so.
Yeah, that's right.
The only ones that are really affecting with the 12% is going to be the prior years that we have not paid in there, or in the liquidated taxes of March that year. So, but I don't think it would hurt us that much to go ahead and do it now, file for the extension, meaning that I pay it. And if it didn't go up there by March, we still got plenty time to make it pay up without too much interest.
And I would say the cases that have been filed in the past, you know, years, I mean, those are still pending. And again, the appeal that will be heard tomorrow is as to, I think, the 2016, 17, and when did they change the name? So, right, and so 18, 19, and then this would be added to it. It's just, you know, the dispute under the new management agreement. But that management agreement, in our estimation, is no different from the prior one. It does not, and we don't think the court will look at it as a lease, which would trigger the denial of the tax exemption. So again, we think that it's going to be the same, same issues, and hopefully will be quickly and easily resolved. And in this year, too, that analysis and that consideration isn't really going to, you know, change the amount of attorney's fees or what the attorneys would have to do to, to continue to pursue that challenge going forward, so.
All right, so do we have a motion?
So move it in a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opponent, say a no. Pass is five zero. All right, now, let's move on to Tiger Point needs to negotiate a purchase and sale of 36 acres. So, and that is the first?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to introduce DeeDee in just a second. I offer a recap just every time we talk about this, because obviously, we have been talking about the 190 acres of the East Course through two mayors and councils since 2016. And so this has been quite heavily workshopped with our South Santa Rosa Utility Board, which is comprised of a majority of our non-city customers in the Tiger Point area, and of course, also by this mayor and council. So just want to, again, for the purposes of our public who may be listening, make sure that everyone is aware that the conversation regarding the East Course, that 190 acres, is what will be discussing tonight. And that is always in the context of the fact that it represents 55% of the city's effluent disposal capacity. And that is based upon our expanding wastewater treatment facility. So when that facility expands to 3.5 million gallons a day, we will absolutely need the East Course effluent disposal that, again, comprises 55% of our overall utility. The council considered a capacity report by Baskerville Donovan that stated that if that continues to be secured along with our other lands, then it would be possible to potentially sell other lands that are not as valuable, that consist of wetlands, or the conditions make it such that we don't use it actively for spray fields. Those spray fields will be talked about later on this agenda. DeeDee's going to give you an update on the listing of those. DeeDee's going to give you an update on the listing of those that have been recommended by the South Santa Rosa Utility Board. And so I just also want to remind the council that in addition to the East Course, as Mary Jane just shared, after conversations that have lasted the last three years, we closed on the 45 acres of the West Course for a new school. The impetus for that were conversations between the school board and the city council that that would preserve and enhance the neighborhood integrity and property values in that area. And that was for ultimately a $2 million revenue for the utility and for the city. And then also you sold the driving range for $2.25 million and you reinvested those proceeds back into the East Course, into new irrigation and into relocating the driving range. So the council has, from the time that you have secured this property in 2012, to ensure that that effluent disposal would be secured and would not be lost with property looking at receivership and ultimately bankruptcy, you have continued to make investments in golf. That is certainly not statutorily required or otherwise required, but that was done in, in understanding that those investments were offset by the savings which were found by being able to expand the wastewater treatment facility and not having to build a second plant on Bergen Road. And so with all of that being said, I know that DeeDee has worked very, very hard and has been speaking with potential buyers and that has all convalesced until the, into the letter of intent, which was received by DeeDee as our broker last week and she's here to tell you more about that. Dee?
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm very happy to, to bring this to you tonight and to take any of your, all apart, take any of your questions that you may have on this tonight. We did receive this letter of intent and it's a, it's a creative approach to the purchase of Tiger Point Golf Course because it will involve a simultaneous closing between a golf, between an LLC that already owns two other golf courses. They're not local people. And then a local restaurateur, Scott Zep, who would close on the clubhouse and to the new driving range, made two holes from the former West Course. So they have put their heads together and their interests together and have come up with something that I hope that you will see great potential in. But you should have in front of you the letter of intent and I wanted to just go over a few of the highlights there and take questions that you might have on it. The buyer is Capstone Golf LLC and they list there the things that would be included and this is nothing new. These are all things that are included in the current listing that we have out there that would include the equipment, clubhouse, as well as all of the real estate. So they laid all of that out for you. The purchase price would be a total of $1 million. You know, we have an appraisal that had the East Course valued at 1.7. We had a list price on it at 1.9 to give us some room for negotiations. But through the course of this listing, we have come to really fully understand a lot of the challenges that are involved with this course and understand a lot of the hurdles that anyone is going to face in trying to buy this course so they can justify their, their offer. And I, I don't think that it's unreasonable and I'll take additional questions for that as we go along. But we have discussed some of these in the past. Additionally, since all of this conversation began, of course Hurricane Sally hit and the course has taken significant damage. A lot of it will be paid to correct by insurance, but certainly not all. And they are offering to buy it as is, but the insurance claims and future payments would transfer with it as well. Let's see, moving on to the second page, it does, there's one section in there that we have verbally gotten them to remove and because I did not feel it was in the best interest of the city to have the second part of this particular paragraph that says that they can either purchase it for the $500,000, that would be the clubhouse and 10 and 18 of the, post 10 and 18 of the West Course, or enter into a lease arrangement with the city and staying encumbered for an additional three years, I just, I do not feel is in the best interest of the city. We have discussed this further and they have verbally agreed to strike that. But we wanted to bring the original letter of intent here for you to see exactly what the original offer was, get your comments and hopefully tonight get approval to proceed with some kind of contract negotiations if you conceptually agree with what is in front of you. They have spelled out what the deposit would be and where the deposit would be placed. The due diligence period, this is important because it's really very brief. They've already done a good deal of homework about the course. They know what they're getting into. They have played out there regularly. The due diligence period would be 60 days and during that time, of course, they can walk away for any reason whatsoever. They want this to work, so they have shortened, they've tightened it up. They feel there are some things that they still have to research and with the cooperation of a lot of people in this room, we will get all of that information to them to, to move as quickly as possible to bring this to a head should you decide to go that direction. They, let's see, moving along, they understand the contract with the utilities board regarding the use as a spray field and are in agreement with that. They like the idea of free water. They understand that as long as the city is in the business of the utilities, with the utilities plant, that this will be the arrangement. So they fully understand that as well. They also spell out specifically the insurance claims. They understand a lot of the improvements are in works, but in the event that any of these carry over beyond closing, all of these, both outstanding and incoming payoffs will transfer with this deal. They want the, to be able to enter into lease agreements, at least tentative, that may be necessary to, to close on this. They don't spell those out, they don't even know what they are. Those are the things that attorneys will have to work out. After the 60 days due diligence, they would close within 15 days following that period. So you're looking at a first quarter close next year. They've spelled out the closing cost. One thing has changed verbally since that as well and the, originally they asked for the seller to pay for the survey. We're not sure what this is going to cost. It is traditional that the seller provide the survey, but they have agreed, the buyer has agreed to pay for the survey here, which I would highly recommend. Title, let's see. They have asked for confidentiality, but they understand that tonight, as of this moment, there is nothing confidential about this. They just hadn't dealt with the government entities before, but they fully understand. They are asking that we get a signature ASAP and proceed to contract negotiations. So this by no means outlines all of the details that will be involved. Mary Jane's office coordinated an extensive process in coming to contract when we had the first offer. So hopefully the process could be streamlined this time. There's a lot still to be tweaked, but, but the concept here is good and I am open to take any questions to the best of my ability.
Okay. Any questions?
So is it typical that the seller pays as much as it would be paying for?
No, it, these are pretty standard. All of these are fairly standard. Everything, of course, is negotiable, but by far one of the largest expenses that you will have here is going to be that survey.
If I could just point out that because as a government entity, we do not pay documentary expense on property and therefore in the past deals we've done, we have asked that the buyer pay documentary. So that may be another issue that we would want to raise the hand before finding out if a letter. And I've already provided some comments to Samantha and DeeDee just on some, just border and then beginning to make sure that this represents whatever you decide to like.
And the letter of intent, even with the signature, the letter of intent is non-binding.
Right.
By signing this, you're not agreeing to every single line by line in here. There is a lot, as Mary Jane pointed out, there's some things that would need to be cleaned up even as a letter of intent, but it does allow, it does allow us to go into negotiations and then bring back the contract to you for review at that time.
And then the other question I had, it talks about the equipment included, the golf carts and that, I think those golf carts are all leased, is that for five year lease?
The, as I understand it, and of course Ron can speak even better to this, but there is a lease, but there is a, an agreement, a contract in place that upon what is perceived to be the life expectancy of those carts, they will be turned in, they'll be, basically it's trade-in and new carts will be obtained.
So we don't pay anything to the new carts when we turn the old?
Oh, yeah. There's a, there's a credit per, per cart, yes.
So, so that's, my question is, so that we still have, we assigned a new lease on all new golf carts about a year ago?
Actually, between this year and next year, you have budgeted to replace the entire one.
Right. So they're saying that they, they will own all that, so are they going to take over the lease too?
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't say that.
Yeah, this, this is not complete.
Okay, and it says they'll own all the equipment. So that, my question was, do we have to go in and pay off the lease as part of our cost or is that something that they will assume that they can take over?
Samantha, right here.
Sure. And let me also just clarify, the $1.7 million appraisal that DeeDee was talking about, it's 1.2 for the East Course and then the other five was what we're talking about. That's the maintenance, the equipment and the rest of that, which the golf carts were part of that appraisal amount of that 500.
True.
The golf carts were purchased directly three years ago. We will, at the end of four years, those golf carts, we had 72 golf carts. Unfortunately, 1.1 of them was stolen. We now have 71 golf carts. But they were purchased, we purchased them outright and then the purchase agreement, there was a guaranteed buyback at the end of four years of $1,450 per cart. So each one of those carts carries a guaranteed buyback value of $1,450 when it comes time to purchase a new one.
Okay, what's the new cost?
I provided that to you, but I would prefer not to talk about it.
I hear you. So the answer is?
It's like the lake, right?
Yeah.
So the answer is, yes, they'll, they'll take over whatever leasing is.
They will, they'll step in.
So we won't have to pay off if it's not your.
Correct. Correct.
And any future maintenance budget, I think that we had in the budget for maintenance, we won't be doing either. So that's saying that we'll, we'll come back to the budget.
That's correct.
We won't be spending.
And I would just say, for staff's recommendation tonight, it would obviously be to approve the LOI and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, authorize your broker, city manager and city attorney to begin negotiations. But if you could also add to that recommendation and also approving the city attorney, making any changes for internal consistency and clarification, that's a little catchphrase that we put in there that allows our city attorney to work with their attorney and kind of talk with all of the, talk through some of these legal nuances.
Kind of like we do with the school property.
Exactly.
You said, go for it, and then you worked on the PK.
Right, substantively.
Right, and just as an example, I think it's important to all, one of the recommendations we would make on the letter is to, on the paragraph about providing irrigation, that irrigation would be provided subject to an effluent disposal agreement that would be signed and recorded immediately after the deed so that, again, it's not just, yes, here's the water and you can do with it as you please, it's subject to the terms of that agreement so that it does meet the needs of the wastewater treatment plant. And so those are the kind of details that we want to just be sure covered. It doesn't change it some degree, it just makes it very clear here that that's an important term and component for us going into negotiating an actual purchase.
There are a lot of details to be worked out, but I think that this comes closer than anything we've seen and we've seen a lot in accomplishing long-range goals for the city and for the neighborhoods in that whole Tiger Point community. That is a thriving golf course with people that really understand it and know how to run it and a world-class restaurant that everybody down here can really be proud of. And we've got the right players in place. We've got, you know, we've got some things to work out, but conceptually, I hope that you will see this as well and give us the authority to move on.
What would it be worth if the repairs were made in the first place? What would that do to the value?
If you put the probably $1.6 million required to make those kinds of improvements, then what would it overall be worth? Probably still about 1.5, 1.4, even after those kinds of repairs are made. So that's why I'm saying you're looking, you're looking at a lot of hurdles, you know, in an appraised value. A lot of things have happened and a lot has been uncovered that will show you that an appraisal is a great snapshot of any given moment, but there's so much more involved.
Well, I think if I were to do a birdie correctly at this, but it seems like any discussions even that you are having with other entities who had expressed an interest in, I think there'd been four or five that actually came on site from out of town and went through the course and Ron had many conferences as well, was the only who had expressed an interest, but when it came down to it, when, when they got into the detail of, you know, the course and I think they feel like the court had thought like the course was in good shape, but it just still needs a line, as we know, budget wise. And so then they just walked away, you know, so we've not had anybody who's pursued it, asked a visit, asked a conversation and it's been, how many events we kind of?
We love that course here in our community. We play that course. We think it's beautiful. We think it's wonderful. It still operates in the red. You can't get a loan on a business that operates in the red. So immediately you're losing anyone who's not a cash buyer so, or, or has access to private lending. So there, there have been a lot of hurdles to work through on this, but we feel really, really good about this group.
Being a real legend of this, the sale price here, I don't know if you get it, right? But when you factor in the fact that we have to have property for effluent disposal assets we can't sell it for the times we've had to use. So maybe as a golf course, certain ideas.
I understand.
But I think you're right, because look, one thing I like about bringing in local money, Scott Zep, he's, he's going to bring the local flavor back to that section. He's been very successful in all he does at the venture, so that gives you a feel-good about what he wants to do with the clubhouse and the restaurant aspect of it. I think that should make it successful. I think he's going to give it his all and that, you know, I'm even more skeptical with it out of town, somebody coming there. And I think this will make the local community feel well in the technical area as well. So that's, it's got a lot of good benefits there. I think the city ended up getting out of it what it needed, expanding the property it needed to expand the wastewater treatment facility, still have the effluent disposal. We did sell the driving range, I mean, just one of the expenses we spent out of that was the irrigation for the East Course, which was a million dollars alone, just to do that. So it just proves how expensive it is to operate and maintain golf courses. And that's a tough pill right there, just on the breakages, not to mention the golf carts and everything else that goes with it. And then you have the hurricane kind of destroy stuff again. And I think it's probably time. All right, this is the properties that we have sold already exceed the purchase prices they did.
Exactly.
And we have other parcels to sell out, so we're, we're okay there in the operational losses that we've experienced. We believe at least operated this, exceeded what also would have been and we can do something else with it. So it did benefit, it makes probably the right. So it did benefit, and it's probably at the right time to make a move.
I think it's my list to move forward with it, move on with it. We still have to remember that at the end of the day, we have to be able to pump spray water and do it without having to go to court every day like we were before, same management with the course. So I think it's smart to go ahead and move forward. But I think we're throwing our money at the bed.
Agreed.
All right, so do you have any comments or questions from the public? Should we? It's a big crowd there. Okay, do we have a question?
Go for it.
We have a motion to second, and for discussion.
We did add that, that was one of the things that you were talking about, Mary Jane, that little city.
Recommendation to approve.
Subject to revisions that the city attorney can again, to work out. So revision of the, I think that can just be a part of your.
She has a, okay. No. I can get with Mary Jane. Okay, exactly.
I think it's just a motion to approve, moving forward, authorizing the mayor to sign the letter of intent once it has been finalized, improvised by.
Legal counsel.
And conjunction with the other side.
All right. Okay, so we've got that. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Hearing that, pass it five zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now, let's see. Okay.
Thank you. She's still here.
Oh, yeah, that's like her next on the list, too.
I'm not gone yet.
Stay with Jason.
All right, we were also asked to look into the potential listing of some other parcels of land, three in particular, ERS 1, ERS 3, and the Tiger Point West Course. I'll start easy, I think, with the lease discussion. That would be, believe it or not, the Tiger Point West Course, which I would recommend that we table tonight until we get a survey of that entire acreage out there. When we get the survey on the East Course, we'll have that as well, so we'll know more about exactly what we're dealing with instead of speculating on, you know, what kind of acres we're talking about. So I'm not even going to really go into the West Course at all tonight, but I will go into the other two. We'll start with the easiest one, the 17.17 acres, which I believe is ERS 3. We have current appraisals on both of these parcels of land, and we don't dispute the appraisal on either one of them. The one for the 17 acres was appraised at $1,374, and that is where we think it should be listed. We have corroborated with comps in that area and feel like we can support that price and get pretty close to it. It's a great piece of property. You should have the whole marketing plan that we put together on that in front of you, and that's really all I'm going to go into unless you have specific questions. But we can get that up and running with your permission tomorrow.
Okay. Any questions?
You should have all seen the appraisal, and it was far more detailed than what I'm going into tonight, but I didn't feel the need to repeat it. Then the 82.98 acres, which would actually be minus three acres, because this particular piece, while it is a beautiful piece, is going to have a few challenges. Right on 90, right off of 98, there is an elevated water tank, which will require about three acres, so we'll be carving that out of it to give the city the easement there. The rest of it, about 33 acres of it is actually wetlands. There's not going to be a lot you can do with that as far as development, but there is some commercial zoning right along 98. By far, the most valuable piece of this property is going to be on the south side, on the waterfront for residential development. I still think it makes the most sense to sell the entire parcel intact. We'll see how serious a developer will be for those residential, for that residential waterfront, but it is a beautiful piece of property. And again, I'm going to adjust the price per acre minus three acres, which I just got yesterday from, from the city regarding how much would actually have to be carved out for the water tank. But so it'll be the 79, right at 80 acres instead. It'd be slightly adjusted under the $3,028, but the per acre value, we will keep intact. I think that the southernmost residential zoning area is so valuable that it will significantly offset the lower cost of the wetland area. So with your permission, we will put these two on the market at just under $3 million for the 83, 80 acres and $1.374 for the 17.
And for the record, to reflect, the South Santa Rosa Utility Board did meet last September. We didn't have an update for them when they last met this month, but they did inquire, and so it's with their recommendation for approval.
One other point, you haven't made it, but you will. These are currently used as spray fields, but it is the opinion of Baskerville Donovan that they do not need to remain so, that the growing customer base can more than offset not using these in the future for spray fields. Should that be the desire of a developer on these parcels?
So then these can just be clear and say, oh, there are restrictions.
Similar to the school sale, so there would need to be the reclamation fee where we would need to still provide for that effluent disposal elsewhere, whether that be with surface irrigation or rids or the like. So they felt that with the fee, we could offset that, which is their recommendation. So, but as we talked about earlier, this is not our most valuable spray field property, and so staff concurs with that as well. It is not actively used or heavily used for spray fields now.
All right. Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing that, council, do we have a motion?
Go for it. Second.
All right. Any discussion questions? All right. Hearing that, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. And pass it five zero.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Okay. Now, just to where we are. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any discussion items? Got it? Any additions? Probably four. No one? Council comments, maybe running along? Todd, we'll start down with you.
Just wanted to say thanks to you all for putting together the Christmas thing. That's right. But real comment is that we need to be thinking what we're not doing. Champion. I agree.
Have a good, thank you.
Tom?
All right, DeeDee.
I've come out to the community fish fry down at Shoreline Park. I think that's got work, I think it's 30 to 9.
Okay.
It's a very funny to do well in Nicaragua. Rain and mud and everything, you know, they have in that central area here, the, you only don't think they do. So to work out what they can do, fish fry, you go to the colors.
Yeah. Okay. All right, this was a great meeting. Thank you all for coming and taking advantage of the lease. And we are now. I'm going to take a picture. Okay. DeeDee. Thank you.